Call the order of the regularly scheduled school board meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from June 11.
I'll make a motion to review the June 11 meeting minutes as presented.
Yeah, we need further discussion on that. Are there seconds? Second job, thank you. Hey, further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those favors, things I'm saying, aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that carries. Next up is correspondence. It's like we did receive a thank you letter from Heartlink, just thanking us for acknowledging her time was being passed around. We also got the NCS newsletter. Other than that, I didn't actually. Next up is business administration.
Deb's not here, but let's go over the report. Deb, you're both out today. So, um, she just wanted to let you know that there's some new financial laws and that she learned about at her summer retreat. One of the things is on warrant articles, you have to include the cost per pupil and test scores. Any multi-year articles need to have lease bonds and other agreements. She'll bring some of this stuff forward at a later date and talk more specifically about it. And that the upcoming school meeting cycles, report of cost per pupil, salaries for teachers, salaries for admin. They all have to be on a specific chart and has to be a specific sized paper. The New Hampshire Businesses Administrators Association have been working on a template for about a year now. So it's all uniform across all of the districts.
I was reading about that. It's interesting why they did it.
I think just some people aren't wearing their eyeglasses, maybe. But they're very, and font size and.
It's for uniform state record keeping. So it's kind of cool that every, you know, reporting district will be exactly the same now.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah. I have a neat idea.
Summer projects are moving along. They're working on the budget items such as cleaning for the classroom, the trees, the gym floors, refinishing and painting landscaping. There was an issue with the lock-in freezer a couple of weeks ago and that we had called the wicked cool mechanical and they came in. They gave us a quote to fix it. It's going to be about thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. It includes the installation of a new evaporator and condenser with the new refrigerator lines and there'll be one year warranty and the compressor has a four year warranty on it. Debbie feels because it's immediate issue that we should charge it to budget as regular maintenance, but considering using the trust fund and holding a hearing later. If the current system's about 10 years old with a life expectancy of 15, we were to buy a whole new unit, which we looked into would be about forty thousand. We did check with the department about to see if there were any grants out there and at this point there's no grants, but they usually lease some of the friends. So we'll look into that.
So how is the the box itself? I mean, the unit itself is sometimes, and I only know this because recently we went through it over at the restaurant, but replace the parts and everything. If the shell is good, you're not going to put a new engine in a rusty car. So I wonder how.
Pretty much new.
Okay.
Yeah. It's only 10 years old, so it should be all set.
Isn't that exterior?
It is, but I mean, I I was going to bring it up with facilities, but we have contracts to have these condensers and everything cleaned every year and inspected. So I don't know how we got filled up with dirt to begin with, but anyways, it's a relatively new unit. So the actual box should be just fine.
Gotcha. So putting thirteen thousand into something that may only, yeah, okay.
Oh, that that could.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Um, the flooring project should be done this evening. I've just got an update on tour. If you've seen any of it, it looks really great. The um, the math wing has, and I have all the new floors and carpets in the library and in the band room. There were two leaks this year and one in the high school science room and one in the sped classroom office. That was due to the heavy rains. Mark talked to Melanson over the winter and they're repairing it and they should all fall under warrant fees.
Was there anything damaged with the?
No, nothing was damaged because where where it was, there was a few things in like base classroom paperwork and stuff like that, but nothing of significant damage. Um, and that there were no leaks last weekend with the heavy rain.
Right.
There are two things that Debbie feels probably should go to a trust fund hearing is that our key card system is no longer on up to a car, a park with security. It could be a security breach. So this current system's about seven years old and has a life expectancy of 15. The upgrade of the card reader program is just under 10. So Trey did get a recent quote of eight thousand five hundred. He's working on some more quotes. But if we were to replace the whole system, it's about thirty thousand. So she recommends doing the upgrade and use the facility trust fund and we can, there's about a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars in that bond. We can schedule that for August would be the recommendation. And then the lock-in freezer, that could fall under either the facilities or the equipment. She's thinking most, you guys could make the decision, but to me, she spoke about the equipment because it was one of those things that's in that C and D plan. And then to hold both of those in August. And that she's working on all over here on reports.
So there's refinishing the gym floor this year, like a full refishing?
Uh, yeah, it looks really good. It's already done. They, whatever they.
Took the reco, yeah.
The clear, yeah, it looks.
Standard and reco.
Yeah, they just do a screen once in a while. They'll re-screen it. And Cliff Putin did an awesome job of these, cleaning the trees up.
Yeah, the trees look great.
I know they could finish it, but then what he did looks fantastic.
And we had a couple of staff members, our parent educators who wanted to continue to work all summer. So they've been helping with the grounds. It looks really good.
Yeah.
I think that extra help has been a full addition.
Fantastic.
Question on the door access card readers. Are the cards that everyone carries like they're just for door access, right?
Yeah.
That's not, there's no other implication.
Nope. So we'll still have cards, but it'll go to a flop system.
There's no more safer grant money out there from the safer.
The only grant money that we could see required, that was like with the federal government and it required all these things about immigrants and DEI and given access to, if we're going to do some sort of security, we had to give all kinds of probably for protected information. So that was the only one we could see, but she didn't see any other grants.
Gotcha. Great.
Thank you. And you're excellent.
Yeah, so we have a couple of, um, a lot going on in the legislature. And I'll be heading to a two-day with a two-day conference on September, I mean, sorry, August 7th and 8th. Peter, Ashley and Nancy, so really dive a little bit on more deeply into it, but things that you should know is the cell phone policy, that there's a district-wide ban. Um, it's a state law now, bell-to-bell. There are exceptions if they're written into a student's plan for an IEP or student who has ESOL or 504. And that could be for like medical things or learning, but there has to be a documented need, but it's bell-to-bell around that. We have, that policy needs to go to you tonight for immediate approval because it has to go in the handbook. So you'll see that. But uh, so that one will be interesting, but we have all kinds of messaging and messaging plan already to go out to families. That will go out this week if it's approved.
As a parent, thrilled.
I know. But it includes smart watches, right? Everything. It's not just cell phones. Smart, smart watches.
Arguably includes laptops.
Anything that's not provided by the district.
Right.
It's not malicious. So it hit us their personal laptop. It includes anything that can be connected to wifi to exchange data. So earbuds, because they're connected to an iPod or something that exchanged. So all of those things are banned, bell-to-bell, state law.
I am so glad I am not a teacher or administrator with this. It's going to be a nightmare for them, especially at the middle high school. And there's nothing we can do whether we want to or not. It's state law now.
Definitely.
If we do need kids to be able to have access to any of those things, the district has to provide it. So say we needed a kid to, we're out and we're had taking pictures of something and it was some connected to the internet, we would have to provide that. And then it would have all the district limitations on it.
I lost some comments on that.
I know. That's what I said, that's what I was saying, your grant policy.
I have it. And I, I think that I think that there's, there's loopholes in the size of legality and the, and the law is so broad and nonspecific that it's almost, I understand the intent, but it's, there's not a lot of like, there's no requirement that we enforce it. There isn't. And it just, it says that they're banned, but it doesn't say we have to do anything about it.
Well, in our policy, it does.
I know. I s- I see what we've, what we've done and I have concerns about that, but we'll discuss that during the course of the, the thing. I, it's just such a.
Uh, the handbook has to be printed, so.
Yeah.
But we should discuss it because that's what I was saying in policy today, that there's a lot of policies coming through. State laws kind of rush through saying that you have to have it all done by the start of the school year. Doesn't give the school board opportunity to really work through their process. I don't, I don't personally feel. And even though there's a lot, a lot of them are emotionally charged, I think, with people having really strong opinions over them. So it's a lot to go through these policies right now.
Yeah. And one of the other issues that I, that I think may be a problem for us is the, the state law specifically says that we are supposed to be developing this in conjunction with parents and families. And I mean, we've effectively not done.
So it, I think it says that we have to review it every year with the families.
I believe, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't have great service right now, so I'm, I'm trying to pull it out, but that's part of the concern, but again, that's something we can move.
Yeah, I think it says at the very, I'm like, to be reviewed with families.
I did.
That is part of it.
Yeah, provide you a copy of all the policies.
Did you actually click? I'm looking for the statute, but not the actual. I don't think that's in there.
The policy is there, but not a statute.
When we, we can pull it up on the internet. I'll pull it up while we're doing other things.
Okay.
Yeah. That makes that pop. So, and then the EFAs. So education freedom council, though, it doesn't seem like it should impact a public school because it is for homeschool students, kids going to private schools of any sort. There is a piece in there that students who have EFAs can access public schools if the public school system deems themselves as an educational service provider and then you can charge tuition. I think at this time where it's all brand new, I think that we should just not do that at this time, see how it shakes out. There are a lot of schools in the North Country who have been contacted regarding this and they're checking to see what other school districts, and I think everyone's just kind of putting it on hold for right now to see how it shakes out, maybe with the bigger school systems. But that will be up to you. If you want to become an educational service provider, then we can put that on the August meeting.
And, and that allows us to, if, if uh, an EFA student wants to like, say, take a class here or participate in sports or.
No, it's not participate in sports, it's to take classes here or anything within our education system, not sports. But if we wanted to offer a math class and a kid who is not in our jurisdiction, so not in our residence, because if they're homeschooled, they automatically have access here. But if they go to a private school and they want to come take a class, you could charge them for the class. It's not a bad idea, but I'm not sure how that all will play out. And I just wonder if we should let a few schools see how this legally shakes out.
It seems like, is it worth being, you know?
Again, no, I don't, I don't think it's worth us and our size to.
And what's the, what do we, the demand is going to, thank you. What do we, just the demand for that is going to be anyway?
For us, I haven't gotten any calls, but the other schools in the North Country have.
We have.
Or homeschoolers looking.
No, because homeschoolers can come take a class. It's kids who might live in a different town wanting to take it at a different school system and they're.
What about like the winter? Kids that come up for the winter to their winter home to ski all year, could they tuition in for the winter?
Well, if they're New Hampshire students, I'm sure they can have them tuition in. I mean, you can always accept a tuition, but these are for kids who are either homeschooled or in private schools, you'd have to deem yourself as that. So I'm not.
Gotcha. So that's other New Hampshire students.
That's part of the problem. It's not defined in the law. They just kind of threw that in there. And so I think the New Hampshire School Board Association right now is trying to work through, like, what does this mean?
Gotcha.
There's a bunch of groups getting together. It may come down that you have no choice if universal vouchers come along, they're going to use the same type language.
Great.
Yeah. And it's not like districts, you go into other districts for classes. No, that would be universal voucher.
Okay.
So, so. The parental rights law, there's a new policy on that. Um, you'll see that and that they've added Constitution Day also. Um, that we have to recognize that. And just for those who don't know, it's September 17th.
Does that have to be on the handbook?
Yeah. Uh, no.
It's not a day off, right? It's just we're gonna.
Oh, no.
Yes. You have to explain the legislative agents and the Star Spangled Banner.
Other things.
Yeah.
We can explain.
Citizens' rights.
Unfunded mandates from level school districts.
We could actually do.
Yes.
But yes, so, um, so let's move away from that. There's more to come. I'll have more after August 8th for you. So advanced placement, uh, this is really exciting. Our social studies students did exceptionally well on advanced placement, scoring either a three, four, or five, every single one of them. So that means they are getting their college. There was some pushback a little bit about letting our freshmen and sophomores take those courses. But I want you to know they're the highest forms on the AP.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so we'll continue to allow that. Our biology, we're still trying to work through that piece of it and I haven't gotten the English ones yet. Um.
I love the new website.
Oh, great.
It is so phone-friendly. The other one was, last one was not.
Yes.
That's a.
I know.
There's a lot of things that say under development skill. And so as the school year progresses, we'll just keep adding. I just didn't want to put all kinds of things and muddy the waters.
Right, right, right.
See me sharing.
So much easier to use.
Really spearheaded that. So I can't think hard enough, but we've been talking about it on a regular basis and going through and making sure that it, it's clean and people can find what they need to find.
Congratulations.
I know. That was a big thing. I'm like.
It's not, not easy to do those things and it, it's never done. So.
Well, we just kind of said, we'll do it. Thank you. Taken it on and we got it done.
So it's, it's up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will never be done.
It's never done, but.
It's never done, but yes, yes, that's what we did. Um, we will have a monthly district newsletter that comes out starting in August. It'll talk about our summer happenings and then what to look forward to. So every month that'll go out to community and family and parents. So they are aware, they, it's reflective of the previous month and then what's coming up. So if there's increased communication on that.
That's good.
Yeah, the full left that when we've had in the past. Yeah. Um, STEM programming, um, as promised, we will be reintroducing the welding and the small engines.
I love that.
And all of that stuff back to the middle and high school this year. And with the hopes that kids on really learn how to use those tools. So when they get into high school, we can really do some big project-based learning around that.
Who's teaching that?
So there's two teachers for it. Um, Sean Woods will be the main person, but where Megan Poole is the teacher, they'll be lesson planning together so that make sure we're developing a curriculum, which we didn't have before. So it will all documented. So the two of them together.
Well, that's fantastic.
And our draft for your plan will be available and presented by Two Red for you on August 20th. We'll have to look to see if that should be a work session for part of it. So you guys can hear it, but they're hoping to be able to gather the information from you all. And then we'll have two community sessions on that day, the teacher, staff, administration sessions. That's one of our opening days. And so the strategic plan for you all is still in track to be approved for October.
Great.
Let's see. I think that's it for those things. And then we'll get to some of this other things. We'll need to, it's in there already. So policies approved.
Yeah, the rest is on the.
The rest is on the meeting. But then, so you know, what's, um, one thing that I, I do want to point out, and it says upcoming dates. We're doing a lot of work on literacy in the elementary school. So one of the things that we will be offering is kind of the why we're doing this. And there's a movie called Hopeville. And so we're going to have a screening for all of our teachers on that on the 21st. And then we will be having a family and community event in the evening on the 21st. We'll have some popcorn and candy and just like a movie theater around that. So the parents can understand the why behind the push on all the stuff on literacy at the elementary school. And we're back in a few weeks.
I don't think it's possible.
I know. It goes too fast.
It does.
Hate it when they go back to school.
Yep.
On the education service provider. We have to vote if we want, we have to vote if we don't want.
No, you have to vote if you, and I think once, I think just letting it kind of settle in and what the lawyers do their.
Oh, I'm good with that.
Analysis.
Yeah, but.
They have to say as a board, but we do not want it.
Oh, if you do, yeah.
We'd have to develop some policies around it.
We'd have to do all kinds of stuff.
But I'm sure the school association is working on.
Yep.
I'm sure. That's. Uh, yeah, once a year. Except last year was June. Have they worked on it?
Good to hear.
Absolutely.
So Peter's report. Um, our high school math position, we advertise it. And not to say that there, we have interviews, but from the end of the school year till July, I think we, we haven't had any applicants. Um, we did go and look to see how many openings there are and there, yes, yes. There's quite a few math positions opening. And so our plan A is to continue to advertise. Plan B is to execute our MOU with the North Country and do remote AP calculus. And we can, um, we'll have all the technology set up. We've met with Trey to make sure that we can do that. And the kids, there's three kids who'll be taking AP calc. They will do it in a room, most likely off the library and that will be their class. And um, the school is one next to Burrows in person. Forum, I know it started with a G.
Uh, close.
And uh, they, their bell schedule is exact same as ours. So it aligns perfectly.
That's great.
Um, Peter did meet with Jess Palm and Sarah Kraus, and they're both certified to teach the whole, the rest of the complement of classes. So they'll just divide them up. So that's all set if we don't get a teacher. So we can absorb it into our current staff right now. You already heard about the flooring. And then there are some, Peter and Ashley attended a training over the summer and he's continuing to work on making some minor adjustments to our schedule. And that our high school summer session was successful. All students who attended completed all their requirements.
Fantastic.
Yep. ESY ends tomorrow. One of the things that's not on here, but you'll read about it in our first newsletters, the new impact programs had where we had four students come and join that. They learned how to write resumes. They went had ELO experiences. They also got paid during that time. So they showed up, they got seventy-five dollars at the end of the week. Um, so they were able to do some credit recovery and learn some job skills.
That's.
And then our STEM camp will be in August. So the dates.
Right.
So no, we weren't closed this summer.
All right. So. Next up is community reports. Were you, was the facilities committee officially meeting or was that just like a? No, you.
Policies did.
So policy is hard at work in here and we have a million to do over. So is there any, anything you need to cover before we start policies?
No.
Okay. All right. Take it away, team.
Well, the policies for review, um, do they have all those in front of them?
They, they do not. They were given, there's one, there are two sets of copies.
Oh, that's right.
And I have one.
I know those I just looked at on my phone. I think I don't. I mean, none of them had major changes anyway.
Well, yeah, the ones for review had no changes. They were just for.
Ones that we have to review every time.
They, they were recommended that we review all the financial policies by the auditors. When we brought these to the policy committee, this, this section, they decided there's no changes were needed and that we would just bring them forward to the board for review. So we can note that they had been reviewed by the.
Okay. So that, so there was a couple of different chunks of policies.
Yes.
Yeah. That was my sort of assumption as to what was going on. I, I didn't know if it was that or if, if the auditors were suggesting that we needed to make any changes, but you're just basically saying that we should be, we should be looking at these. We should be just making sure that we're comfortable with them, but they didn't make any particular issue with any of them.
Yeah. And the policy committee had no changes.
Yeah, nothing jumped out.
No. We don't need to take any action on that, right? We, we can just add that we.
No, it just. We'll just change the date on the bottom that they were reviewed.
Okay.
Yep.
Did anyone have any issues with those, that particular chunk of policy?
And then it's policies for first reading. And I went back through these. And I think I have two. The, the one DB with the annual budget. Um, reading through this again, we're taking out the word consideration and adoption. It, it's presented to the board for adoption. Should we not keep the word consideration in there? Instead of just to the board for adoption, but to the board for consideration and adoption, because we are going to consider it and then adopt it.
Well, our, yes, because we are the ones that.
The superintendent will be responsible for preparing and presenting.
Okay.
To the board for consideration and adoption. We should leave the word consideration in there. Anyone else?
That makes us think.
Yeah, we don't blindly adopt it. Right. No, we do consider it. I would hope the new hours, a day. Yes. And then there was one other one that I saw. I think it was just a typo there. Yes. On DKA, the payroll procedures. We need the word to, all salaries and supplements paid to regular staff members. DKA, payroll procedures. All salaries is. All salaries, supplements paid to regular staff members. That's all. Just a missing word. And I didn't have, I didn't see anything else when I went through them again.
Probably been missing since at least 2018.
I'd say that's a. Not part of the news.
Thousand two.
See, if you look at it enough, you find it. Now, I figured I didn't have enough policies to read through. I might as well go back through the first reading ones. But did anyone else have anything else on any of the first reading policies? Did anyone else have anything else on any of the first reading policies? Um. Do you want a motion to move those to separate now?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I'll make a motion to read, and I don't have to go through them all, do I? Just all those first reading policies, let's move into second reading.
Well, second, thank you.
Thank you, Pammy, thank you, Jasmine, um, any further discussion on moving. All the policies that were presented for first reading to second reading? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, extensions, and then motion fix. Then we have.
Handbook policies.
Handbook policies, those are, these are new.
Yeah.
New law. That I, you know, whatever, we're, we don't, we get full list to do, so.
Well, we, all we have to go on the handbook, so we have to send these on to the handbook, and then they will come back to us for first and second reading.
Right, and then we can just print out, uh, if they change from the handbook, we can get something out from parents.
Sure.
So make them aware, but it says that we have to have them in the handbook at the beginning of the school year.
Um.
Please. So, we have to approve what's there now, so whatever's. Documented right now goes into the handbook, and then we can review and then make change.
Well, the law requires us to have things, and when they improve these sentences, and it must be in the handbook at the beginning of the school year, quite a few of them, so that. Exact language, so we'll just do what we did with the Title IX stuff, where we approved it right now, then we sent them back through. Unless you guys want me to put the old policies in and you want me to go through. It's not what's recommended.
No, I understand the reason for how you're doing that. And I did read through them, the only thing I, on the first one, A V. Um, it's just they all parental rights are reserved to the parents or guardian, and or guardian. Oh, with the minor child, so I just wanted to add the word guardian, but.
Yeah. Um, I wouldn't even, why not, I wouldn't say that already.
I know, right, it doesn't make any sense, right. Yeah, I didn't have anything of that.
But yeah, that makes sense.
The um, this is the only, the only change on this one is that policies should be readily available.
We have more on those thing.
Exactly. Um, as well as copies of former versions of revised policies retained as permanent records, but we do that anyway. So. Yeah.
So these are, that's statutory changes. This is, so we don't actually have this in our.
Which one are you on?
The parents' bill of rights one, that's never been part of our.
Brand new.
Brand.
It's brand new that they, that there's a parent's bill of rights, all this stuff is probably. And I think that was the argument, that this stuff already exists, okay, parents already have the right, but now there's a bill of rights. And that the code of ethics for all teachers, that they're changing that, so you adhere to the bill of rights, so this is the bill of rights. This needs to be like, in our, posted everywhere, yeah, and it even has to be like in our year ends. Annual report.
I mean, a, a lot of the stuff is like stuff that we already know. But I wonder if like, some of these things can be interpreted to, to require us to provide additional things, like, for example. To enroll his or her minor child in a gifted special education program. And I'm like, well, to the extent that we have one, we're obviously offering it to any qualified student, but does that mean that we have to develop now a gifted program?
There's nothing in the state statutes that require you to have it, if you have it, then. Enrolling is my understanding of the interpretation, but there's nothing, do I think that'll come, I think that's eventually gonna come, and that's gonna be all argued out. And then schools, now that there'll be another mandate.
Yeah.
I think that this will set the precedence for that. But right now, there's nothing in our state laws that require us to have a gifted and talented program.
Right. Well, this is gifted or special ed.
Yeah.
But we have to have special.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
The special ed one has, you know, has a law attached to it, but there's nothing that says the other.
I think a lot of it is just gonna be interpreted as we go.
I, I, it's.
That's all you can do.
Associated with these, and they're not clean like you would like the laws to be, and there, it's gonna be a lot of.
Right.
Legal battles with people to get them fully interpreted. But most of these things we already have, and I think that was the argument, why do you need this, when it's already sits in this law, that law, that's all.
Right.
So.
Right, yeah.
Um, the yellow stuff seems like we're almost changing a lot of the, however.
The wording, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it's sort of changing it from a. To a sort of a proficiency, competency type evaluation.
Law states that we have to have a competency bed based education, so. They moved, they just aligned that with competency based education.
I was wondering, if we, we're not specifically changing the way that we are evaluating students' performance in those programs, or the value of those programs.
Already doing it now.
And we're, and we, we've actually increased them last year, and we'll continue to increase the yellows.
Great. This is just eighty eight, five and.
Yeah.
So, on that.
Just like, with regards to the, the posting of the.
Right.
Policy.
And to have an elementary.
Version.
Version, yeah. Okay.
Let's go with the wellness policy first.
Come on. Okay. I have marked this like I have something, but then I didn't.
You did have.
I know, but then I didn't write making on that.
What's I M H, just saying, we, we have, adding that reference that policy.
I didn't print it, and.
Rock small classes, making sure there's like P E, there. Their policy is daily physical activity, you know.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll come.
I think I might have that actually.
We have at least thirty minutes of exercise.
Right.
At elementary for kids, it's about that, at least we did.
One of the things that, one of the recent policy changes that I had noticed that we made was that we are no longer. Permitting um, lots of recess as a, as a disciplinary.
We never did.
Well, that was a change, it was, that, that was a, a actual change that was in the policy, and I know factually that that happened. That wouldn't be, when um, your students were getting in trouble with their not being.
Recess is fully taken away, they may not be able to go out and play with their.
It's only even unsafe, if it's an unsafe, if they can't safely go out and play with their peers. Recently, well, he's going to third grade, but last few years, I've had that argument several times. And uh, if the student is not safe, can't safely go out, safely interact and play with their peers at the playground, then they don't go out. But if they could safely go out, you know, if they're pitching a fit and throwing things, we're not sending them out there to pitch fit and throw things with other kids. But if they can safely go out there because they did something stupid, but they're not pitching a fit, then they go to recess, and the punishment is otherwise. I give.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
I've heard that, sorry, I just had to comment on this, the statement of all food and beverages available on school campus. Contribute towards eating patterns or dietary. I feel like that should be tweaked to say like, you know, food served by the school, and I'll just. What immediately came to my mind is homecoming weekend, and it's on school campus, and there's. It's not dietary, you know, these dietary restrictions.
French fries, this is the next stuff.
But like, I don't know, it's served by food, I mean, obviously, we're gonna be allow.
All food and beverage skirt, served by the school or provided by the school.
I think there are other. Requirements in the law, based that state, like the time.
Oh, like during the school hours?
Yes, that it's like, or like during the school day, and then there's a certain period before and after. School where that's.
I think it's, they do this because of vending machines and schools, that's what it's really is impacting. We don't want soda machine, chip machines in store.
So do we put an exception on there for?
Fundraisers?
Fundraisers?
That's a good idea.
Because like.
Circumstances where, where, where foods being served in the school. Or I mean, like selling candy at the.
Exactly.
Yeah, or graduation, those are all generally.
More handcuff fries.
Special events and fundraisers and things like that. Yeah, maybe it's just outside of school operating hours, or. Or maybe like special events.
It has to be, isn't it seven AM to three PM? I believe it's seven AM to three PM.
I, I have to look at one the other.
Here's the thing, though, this is also super nonspecific, right, it just says contribute towards eating patterns that are consistent with dietary guidelines for Americans, which. Just says eat unhealthy foods in moderation.
Exactly.
As long as we're not selling it every day, that we're doing it on, you know, on a. Sporadic basis, and I don't think that we're in.
I don't think the food police is. How, how about we just take out all, so so sweet and beverages available, not all. So we'll have those things available.
I love it, take out the word all, that's fantastic.
Right, and cheat days too. And again, you know, we're not offering handcuffed french fries every day to the students, like lunch.
And they're more specific than J L C F dash.
Yeah.
Is more specific.
That's the one that says you need to police it.
Right, right.
Jasmine will be here daily.
Jasmine will keep an eye on it.
Only G L C F needs to be in.
Gotcha.
In the handbook, so, but J L C F R will be coming to the policy committee in August.
Alright Jay.
So stay tuned.
Yes.
J I C.
J I C J, J I C J, so here's my, here's a couple of issues. Number one. The, the actual bill text says such policy shall be developed in collaboration with any app of the local educator associations and school district parents. And shall be reviewed and updated annually.
Okay, so there's uh, several amendments to that one.
Alright, this is the HB two oh six.
Okay, but there's several amendments to HB two oh six.
Can you find the actual final language, because that's not as easy as it.
I'm on.
And it's not helpful yet on the state's statute.
Yeah, it's not there yet, but in um, if you go to general court. They gave all the amendments, so the last one is June third. And it says. Says all that stuff, school boards and board trustees and charter public schools shall develop and adopt a policy governing the use of cell phones. And other personal electronic communications or gaming devices in school. Such policy shall prohibit all personal electronic communication or gaming device used by students from when the first bell rings, the start of instructional time. Until the dismissal bells to the end of academic school day, with approved exceptions determined by the superintendent they designate with respects. The student's medical disability or language proficiency need. Such policy shall be developed in collaboration with school parents and teachers and shall be reviewed annually. The school district and chartered public schools shall not prohibit students with medical needs such as insulin pumps, glucose sensors, or disabilities. From using a device to support their learning as identified by the individualized education. Um, the I E P plan developed under section five oh four. Or when required, support emergent multilingual students with appropriate language access programs and services pursuant to title six. Blah blah blah, such policy.
Can you give me the um, the, what the bill name, number is?
Yep, it's S B two oh six, and the last amendment is June third. There are one, two, three, four, five amendments to it. Such policy shall not be construed to prohibit use of such devices for emergency communication or deter acts of physical violence and bullying. No such policy shall be construed when and to the extent that the school requires the use of laptops or tablets for educational purpose. To prohibit the use of other privately owned laptops or tablets as alternative to school issued managed laptops and tables, tablets, I mean.
You said June third is the.
That's the last one I see on there.
Is that the one that has been signed, though?
This is usually the updated, with all the last one being assigned. Hold on. Let's see when this is. So that's it, the house, the, they did a roll call vote on six five, so that's the one that would have gone through.
Are they allowed to bring them to school, just not in the classroom?
Yeah, but the, so that's the House passed bill.
It says.
But there was a committee of conference between the House and the Senate, because the Senate passed it. It was very much different.
And put in a side locker, backpack, or handbag.
There was, there was a, a pretty significant difference between the Senate pass bill and the House pass bill, there was a committee of conference where, where modifications were made and sort of. Reconcile those as part of the budget. Process, the budget rider bill, and so I just, like, I don't know, it, I think it's part of uh, HB two. But it's like, almost, it's like impossible to find.
So I think that is the act, the amendment of June third, it was the floor amendment. To S B two oh six with the fiscal note. It's not in the R C's yet.
Right, which is obnoxious, because it would be nice for them to like, actually make it clear exactly what we're dealing with. But I think even this, even this version of it requires.
Let me, let me just type in here, see if I can do R C.
It was one eighty nine, one A.
What is it?
One eighty nine, one A, but in its paragraph five, but it's not in there. Not, at least not on the. Um, oh, you know. They just haven't updated the, the state's website.
Yeah.
My, you know, the concern here is um. Such policy shall be developed in collaboration with school parents, teachers, and shall be reviewed annually.
Developed in collaboration, I wrote that down.
Right, so, so to the extent that we're developing a policy. You know, there's, no, number one, I don't think that this sets a timeline for when we need to develop that policy. Number two, it mandates that we engage with the parents of the district. In order to develop the policy, and I don't know if, in, I would be concerned that was such a sort of charged issue. No pun intended, uh, that if like putting. Putting whatever it was, it was on the, you know. Putting this on, on the agenda is, is sufficient to like, have been. Have, have done what we needed to do to coordinate with, you know, you know.
And I guess I understood it, and I see where you're saying that, but when I went into the policy, I understood that. We have to have this in the handbook at the start of the school year, and that we would review it. This is what we have, and then we would review and engage with parents, I guess, that's how I interpreted that part, but it doesn't say when we have to.
Yeah, it definitely doesn't say that it has.
That has to be before we put it in the handbook. That had to be before we put it in the handbook. It just says we have to do it every year, so we couldn't.
But it doesn't say when we have, it says we shall do it, but it doesn't say when we have to do it. We could do it next year, we could do it this summer, we could do it, you know, doesn't. It doesn't put any timeline on when that has to happen. Right? And if it takes us a year to develop a policy with this, with the parents input, uh you know, then so be it, but I don't think that it will, you know, frankly. I expect that we'll get roughly the same amount of community participation as we normally get in, you know.
This is a charged issue for a lot of people, so it's.
So it says we have to have a policy, but the law is clear that it's bound to that. So that I think that's where the rub is gonna be like. We can have, which we should have family input and maybe we can, that can be around the consequences and things like that, but. It's the state law now that there's no cell phones in schools.
Sure, we just can't. There's this in there and say, yeah, we're not, you know, we're gonna wait until we get your feedback. No, but but I will say that there's significant. In us, because there's no definition, there's no definition of what personal electronic communication devices, there's no definition of of. That tells us the the breadth of what we have to ban, other than cell phones and. Gaming devices. But I I think they. That our policy that we're proposing to adopt. Has a pretty broad net and says essentially anything capable of electronic communications is going to be classified as a personal electronic communication device. Which I don't know that the community is gonna support. Right? If I have, if we have students who maybe because they. Uh, you know, because they wanna use a a MacBook because of its, you know, graphics capacity is better than a Windows. We're not buying those for our students, but they wanna use it for our projects or some of their STEM projects, or maybe they're even their project based learning stuff. We are saying that they cannot do that. And I don't think the statute says that we have to say that. I also think that um while there is. No question about the fact that the legislature wants us to. Enact a ban. There is no provision here for what the, what the consequence should be for that. Who's on the hook for enforcing it? What we're supposed to do when if we, if a student violates that policy in terms of, I think our policy says confiscate their phone. And I have serious concerns about. The school district coming into possession on potentially daily basis with tens of thousands of dollars worth of other people's personal electronic devices. This is a thousand dollar cellphone. If that gets broken when it's in the custody of our front office staff for whatever reason, who knows why, right? Maybe some angry student comes in and throws their phone in the river and it gets broken. Who's on the hook? Because we took possession of somebody else's property and now we're, and now we're on the hook for damage to that, you know? Right, it, how are we gonna know or how are we going to monitor that a cellphone that we took from some kid wasn't already damaged? There there's just a lot to work out and and I don't, it's not something that I feel comfortable. Rushing into, at least without hearing from the community on on, and maybe maybe the, maybe the answer is, you know, we don't really. We're not really interested. Maybe the answer is people are very interested. I just think that what we've done. In terms of noticing up this policy on for tonight. Given that it is kind of a, it is, you know, it's, it's just on here as responsible use of electronic devices, which is what we had before, which, you know. Doesn't necessarily put people on notice of what we're talking about. And given the fact that we're explicitly being told that we have to engage with this, with the community and the parents and teachers about it. I I think it makes sense to more specifically say. That we are blocking off a segment of maybe our next meeting in order to facilitate a conversation about. How our district wants to deal with it, because we had this, this, we had this essentially similar conversation a couple of years ago when we enacted our middle school cellphone ban. Right? And we did have a fair amount of community engagement with regards to that on both sides. Um, and I think that that has generally worked out to be a benefit to our students and and the the school. Um, but I also think that there's, there continues to be problems in the enforcement. And how that occurs and you know whose responsibility it is and you know. Just makes sense for us to be thoughtful about it.
I think you're right.
I I understand the need of like the the need for clarity, right?
Yep.
And.
The need for it to be printed in handbook too, though, correct?
Well, I don't think it needs to be printed in the handbook, right? I mean, ideally, yeah.
We could put our current policy in there.
But that allows usage during the day, so we could say, we could just put something will be released, change the handbook. At a policy would develop improved by such and such date.
Yeah.
And then we can get that out to parents and we can do the messaging. The thing that we were hoping is that. We could do some messaging so people understood it before.
Well, the messaging should be, cell phones are not allowed in in school from bell to bell, period. And then, you know. While, you know, please bear with us.
Originally had in there.
Yeah.
Just put that and see policy blah blah for further clarification and we could. Leave that in there and I think that would meet the mandate, because I think that's what we originally wrote in there and then this came in like on the eleventh. So or we can say speed policy. We can just put a number and that we can um, once that policy is done, approved, we can get it out.
So. You said this policy came in.
It came in like last week, right at right, the date.
Recommend, this is a recommend.
This is recommended policy from the New Hampshire school. We didn't write it, I didn't.
No, I mean, we did, because we did have. Right, like. We did have, we have a a cellphone policy.
This isn't um us, this is what the New Hampshire School Board Association gave us and it came in right about the time. When we were ready to send everything, it was like, wait, we gotta change this now.
So so and this is part of what like what I'm referring to here, though, is this definition is policy definition, paragraph two under purpose. Is very broad. And it's far broader than I think. It needs to be in light of what the statute says.
I think what the reason they did that is. Students, so some schools tried to ban cell phones and kids brought smartwatches and were texting each other. So they're still communicating with each other, so they tried to say all things associated that would disrupt the learning environment.
Sure. I think though that in light of, there there's a difference between. Something that's required by statute and something that's discretionary.
Oh, yeah.
When it comes to stuff that's required by statute, we have no choice. We can, we're, we're going to enact. A a bell to bell ban on cell phones, other personal communication, electronic communication or gaming devices. Now, what that.
What does the bill say specifically?
From the New Hampshire School Board Association, the exact law that was signed, when it was signed. And we'll get that to you.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
And then we can decide if all these things are extra, but we can hold them. I I think we're probably gonna need to hold a special meeting just for this, just because we, at our next meeting, we do have two rev talking about our strategic plan. And we probably wanna do that next meeting a little bit sooner, so that way we approve something, we have time to communicate with families what it is. Because. Families are gonna say, well, what is a cellphone? Like, we created all these FAQs thingy, okay, what are the families gonna ask us? So. We have some of that, those documents, when can they use? What does bell to bell mean? Does it means when they get on the bots like?
Yeah, I. Understandable, everyone, you know, it's a new policy, it's, it's a broad policy and. Yeah, but the. I think at this point, we can, we're printing something in the, we're bringing something for approval in the handbook. I think it's as simple as saying. Um, you know, pursuant to to state law, there would be a bell to bell ban on.
Exact words originally before this policy came into.
Cellphone, personal electronic communication and gaming.
That's all it is in two oh six.
But it may not, it may have changed. Yeah, so that two oh six is. It's saying gaming, but it may be. Let's just get the exact statute, so we know what it says.
Right.
And not just gaming use, because watchers are gaming use device, like they're.
It, I mean, it says student cell phones. And other personal electronic communication.
Or gaming device, so it's not just a cellphone, it's personal communication.
Right. With no definition of what. I think generally gaming devices, you know, you can bring your Game Boy or your uh. I don't know what the new ones are, but.
I don't know.
Definitely not a game boy. You know, that, that seems fairly.
Or gaming devices, so. We have to define what all of those are and the school board kind of, I feel like.
But I just, I don't know that there's, I I don't know that maybe the, maybe we're. Regardless of what the community supports, we have to enact the ban on cell phones and, you know.
If it's this, it's other communication, personal electronic communication too.
Right.
If it's this particular one on June third. It says student cell phones and other personal electronic communication and gaming devices in school.
Sure.
So those all have to be banned bell to bell.
Right, but the idea though is, we have a list here um and a definition. That. Any. Device that is. Capable of personal communication, electronic communication is banned. And I just don't think that that's this, that's. That broader definition is mandated by the statute. Maybe that's what the community wants. But I don't see that it is mandated. Where it says anything capable. I mean, there's certainly things that. Have uh a, the possibility of being used as to communicate, right? You can use a flashlight to communicate Morse code.
Personal electronic, I went, I guess.
Sure, I mean, I can use an LED flashlight to communicate in Morse code, but that is not a personal electronic communication device. I mean. That's, that's the point. It's obviously a a an extreme example, but. The idea is, you know, a smartwatch does a million different things. In including tracking your, your. You know, health things, indicators. Providing you feedback of whether or not you're going into uh into atrial fibrillation. One of the things that it does is allows you to send text messages, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that this is. In and of itself, a personal communication device. And by any definition that we, that has been mandated. So I just don't know that, I think that we need. Community feedback as. Types of things outside of what is clearly mandated that we want to improve.
So we can do that, but I don't think we can wait to August twenty third to do it.
Next week.
Everything you said comes down to enforcement anyway, so.
Well, right, and that's the other part of it, right? This has, this is like.
Well, that's why I think if we have these lists, it'll be easier for admin.
Sure, but but also we, we.
And there is an et cetera in there for discretion. I, I think that. I think we need some very clear things. I felt like these kind of got at those initial things. And then as we move forward and we implement it, we could have a review and say these things have come up, but if we wanna do. The initial engaging the parents, absolutely, but we should do that next Wednesday.
Sure.
So that way we can post that. And we can discuss the consequences, we can have our FAQs and we can do that all next Wednesday. And then um, I don't know if you guys, it would be a board meeting, so you guys could approve whatever we come, we could take a few minutes, draft it.
I have a training at town hall Wednesday. Planning more training.
We'll develop it.
I mean, does it, we don't have to do on a Wednesday.
Well, I was just, I'm gonna be off on Thursday and Friday, so I was hoping to have it done.
What about Tuesday? I mean, is Tuesday night work for anybody? I mean, because we don't have to have it on Wednesday. And we just need twenty four hours to notice it.
Yeah, I would say, I would like, I I mean, I think it makes sense to to give people ample time to to be notified and, you know.
What about the sets?
Well, what are, what are we notifying them of? That we're having a meeting that they can come and discuss. Well, I, I. But if you go out and say, hey, we're gonna, we're having a meeting on the cellphone ban. Opposed to, there is a state law coming into effect that is this, and this is like, we need to present them with the information instead of just like. Waving the flag of like.
And the recommended policy.
No, no, I I think that we can, we can certainly provide information as to why, what the purpose of the meeting is. Purpose of the meeting is to en- engage with the the community as as we're required to do, but also because there is, there does appear at least. You know, from the statute to be a fair amount of discretion on a number of issues that may be important to include what. Types of things that we are banning that are outside of the three things that like, or the two things that are specifically banned. But what, what are we going to classify as a personal electronic communication device? And then. Uh, and and then on top of that, what are we gonna do when a student violates it? And then who are we going to hold accountable for enforcing it? Because that's kind of the, those are the three sort of big things. And and so next week, we are making a decision on that or next week we are, we are collecting the information. I think that we, we are collecting the information and potentially having a meeting afterwards to to further discuss it. I mean.
I would think that's what. It does, it does define it also like non provided intercellular capable voice or video calls, texts, emails, instant message. I do, I do agree that. When you're reading just the statute the way it is, it does state engage family and the way this is written, it says review it. So after, but I do, I agree, we should do that.
I'm just saying that.
So do we want, can we do it on the sixth?
August sixth. Wednesday, works for me. Works for Joe. Joe said yes.
I'm, I'm out, I'm out of the state.
I am, I have that. The sixth, seventh and eighth, wow. That week is not.
We've gone, we're coming off the jury trial.
You, that's not possible. Question about, so this doesn't address faculty?
No.
Thirteenth.
That's true. This is, because the law is for students, not for faculty.
Right.
I mean, you can have a policy if you want for staff, the law, this is based on the law.
That would require, that would require. Negotiation probably.
July one, yeah.
Would Wednesday, the thirteenth, give you enough time to put it in handbook?
Well, no, we, we have to have the handbook in like.
That's tonight.
Like pursuant bell to bell. Um, for further clarification, see policy under development, J I.
So this is thirteen, that work for anybody?
Thirteen?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yes.
Joe said yes.
Yes.
Okay. So.
So we'll hold a meeting that'll give us. Enough time, the teachers will be in the following week and we'll be able to give them something. And.
Yeah, and um, you know, if we can. Send out something that's coming suggested more specific than we're just having this meeting on this policy. You know, um. That. We are, we we would like to hear from folks and then also send it to the, to the teachers, because like, you know, they're part of it. They're ground zero for enforcement, I guess.
Should we? Sample policy to them.
What's, what's happening right?
I just feel like just jumping, like for jumping, I think if you just. Say that, people are gonna come, but if we have something for them to kind of respond.
Well, I would, I would um reference the bill so they can look up. The, the law. We're not just doing this because we feel like it. There's a law that says we have to do this, so I would reference that and I would um. Uh, include in that the sample policy that's recommended by the.
So we'll do the. Yeah, I'll get the RSA from.
I just wanna make sure. I mean, DOE interpretation of the statute may carry more away from the school association.
Fault in that.
Of course not. Right now, in their classrooms, there's what like shoe organizers or something?
We do have some if you wanna do that. It just says it has to be off, so the fact that you'd be putting it in and out, the kids are, I think that's way more tempting.
Said it has to be in there. This policy.
No, but I'm saying right now, right now, devices go, what, on the back of the door?
No, but I'm saying right now, right now, devices go, what, on the back of the door?
The if the kids want to, and they're put away, but we do have those, but I think just. Having it carry around a cellphone. Doesn't make.
You silently walk into any classroom in the middle high school during the day, they've got their cellphone on their knee, just like that.
Oh, they they have it all different places, yeah, yeah, no, it's forever.
Right.
Forever, my kids are gonna be psyched.
That's why you can't, we had to have that gradually released, like not at all in elementary, middle school, no. High school during certain periods of day, but now it's ever strictly.
Okay, this is the.
If it's off, be sick of the location now.
I don't know, I I guess find out, we'll do some testing.
Yeah. That's why Charlie may have them, so what they are. But there's a gap.
So um.
We'll get out, out, we'll email Barrett tomorrow. And ask him for the exact RSA, saying we can't find it, we see there's several amendments, can you give us?
Well, we have, so it's in SB, it's in HB two, it's.
It is there, I think it's the June third one, just for confirmation.
That's that's different, so you're looking at SB two oh six, which is this, which I think was like the Senate's. Version of it, but then there's, I think HB two, which is the budget rider, which is what it. Eventually ended up being a part of. Which is what was signed by the governor, which I.
I thought it pulled it out of HB two and it went through as two oh six.
Okay, well, that if.
I feel like it came out of there.
All right, I hopefully we can narrow.
Let's get that clarified.
Yeah, yeah.
We're banning smartwatches and. Teachers, faculty, whoever walk around a smartwatch is on and. Checking text messages, it's gonna be. Well, why can you have? That is.
I do think that that is would require negotiations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not, yeah.
That hands, don't they have?
Well, that's, can I interrupt for a second, because one thing we're going to do, set a two factor authorization in a lot of our. Apps, which the teachers then will be required to sometimes use their phone to. Uh authorize that.
What happens when we have two factor authentication per student?
We don't.
None?
No. That that's a, that's a closed um. They're all, they're all Chromebooks and they're all, they can sign in with those, it's locked down.
And we won't have the open guest network either because of this bill, because then they can just hop onto anything.
Yes.
Yep, it'll have the all password network. So we'll get the exact RSA, we'll send that out, the proposed. School Board Association, they come speak with us. The things that we really wanna talk about is what is considered a personal communication device and the. Consequences. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement, yeah.
Um in terms of like, who's responsible for enforcement?
Yeah.
Because I think we. We need to, I think for the teachers and administration, it needs to be clear who's on the hook. Be keeping an eye out for it.
Moving on.
Yeah.
All of these to withdraw. Do we, we don't wanna withdraw these tonight, do we, because they, we have to approve other ones first.
Wait, before we do that, can't we, uh, we need to move these, the other ones.
Yeah.
Oh.
Or for, we need to approve the other ones, right, we're not, we're not, we're kind of not doing the. We're in the truncated.
So I will make a motion to approve all but the J I C J in the handbook policy, uh policies for readings.
A second.
Yes. I wasn't able to find it, but I appreciate it, yeah.
It it is, it is buried.
Uh, okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh all those favors, except for five of staying, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh opposed, tensions, and that motion votes.
Thank you, good catch. Uh, so the ones to withdraw, we're not gonna do that, we're just gonna push them to second reading, cuz we have to approve those first to withdraw these, correct?
Yeah, so we just hold up on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
So just to be clear, on August thirteenth, we'll have the public hearing on it, and then we'll draft the language.
Yes.
And then approve that.
Is that also six thirty, yeah?
Yeah.
Draft the language on the thirteenth?
Yeah, after we get input.
Right, and we can.
But it's still going into handbook as is right now.
We're now, we're putting it as.
Put a general notice.
Yeah, general notice of no real description.
Importance with state law, cell phones are banned, blah blah.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, that general piece, yeah, so that way they know they're banned.
That's what I mean.
Back to our original.
And then policy being developed.
Further policies under.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
It really gives a whole lot of time to.
No, they didn't, we wrote that and then all of a sudden, these things came in and said you have to have them in your handbook, like, okay.
Right.
It's 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 unfair, and there needs to be some sort of conversation.
Here's policy today, approve it tomorrow.
Exactly, in the state law, and you've got three months, but it doesn't work that way.
Right, right.
All right, so do we have any nominations, recommendations, resignations?
Yes, right, let me just get my notes here. So, um for recommendations, uh Sayer is now going to be able to come back.
Yay.
Yes, um as a parent educator, you approved his resignation last time. Savannah Rich as a parent educator. Um, so I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The recommendation.
The recommendation of Sarah Cronin and Savannah Rich as parent educators, so.
Thank you, Therry and Joe, uh all of the various things, thank you, aye?
Aye.
Close sessions, motion carries.
And then the other one is um a two part position. Um Sean Woods will come in and work two periods a day with Megan Fool, the last two periods of the day, so middle school students and high school students can access. Uh the shop, and he'll have structured classes with Megan around that, and then his remaining part, he will. Work as a nighttime supervisor of the custodians, so. So he.
It's a full time position.
So it'll be a full time position, and he'll come to us during vacation times, he'll work with regular custodial shifts. On school vacations, school vacations.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Sean Woods.
Exactly, second. Thank you, Joe. Um, any further discussion? All those favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, close sessions, and that motion carries.
Great.
Is that a working custodial position?
Yes, yeah, yeah, just working and supervising, yeah, it is.
Yeah, no kidding, huh? Oh, no, no, strictly.
Armchair custodial.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, is that it for the?
Yeah, for those, yeah.
So now we are full staffed other than a high school bad teacher, correct?
Yeah, and we also um didn't post for the library assistant.
Uh, so how are you doing that?
Um, we, we had really reduced some of Christie's responsibilities, so she wasn't um teaching health and all the other. She really had a body job, so now she's doing the ELOs and um. The media, uh a meeting with Christie tomorrow, we had some initial conversations about that, but I spoke to Trey about some self checkout. That they needed to use the library up there, and she was down there, and we talked, we're gonna talk about whether she wants to start teaching some of the kids down in the bigger library space. Uh, we'll work that out, um and part of the reason is that we, we, and and talking with Debbie around on. Where we are with finances and um where the federal government has denied loans to. And not loans, uh grants to us. It's about thirty thousand, it'll still allow us to move forward if we don't fill that with all of that PD that was planned for teachers.
Gotcha.
Just gonna see how that goes and really get a better handle on the library usage and.
Uh, next up is the handbook, and so we're just voting to approve it.
Given the language you said.
With the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Does anyone have any? Particular commentary on this?
I read through what I could on my phone, put me to sleep.
I put the figure things in there, what were the changes were.
Yeah, yeah. Great sleeping, so yeah. Yeah.
Uh. Then uh accept a motion to approve the handbook that was presented with the adjustment. Uh to the uh to reflect that we are developing the policy regarding the cell phones.
So hoped.
Like ten.
Second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Um, any further discussion on that? All those favors, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close session of say. And uh that motion.
Joe said yes.
Is there a time when we can consider moving to an electronic format for this entirely?
I think it has to be printed, doesn't it?
Does not.
It does not.
I will.
Doesn't it have? Parents have to sign a thing and send it in.
Um, yeah, we're, we're gonna look at this, we, we did interview the students around it um to say, do you want it part of your agenda? Do you want, they liked having it, I don't know if they even, but they wanted it part of their agenda book and printed. So if he, when we were thinking about changing it, uh.
Middle high school students wanting the agenda book?
Yeah.
I I think it might be a waste for a lot of the younger kids, and is there a significant cost in that, would it be a lot cheaper to print it like this? Versus.
Huge cost.
Wasn't a huge difference.
Go back and look.
No, if there's not a huge difference, then it doesn't matter, no, they're never buying.
But I think we do wanna have the conversation again, probably with students about separating it so that we can print it ourselves, and we can make the. Changes when we need to make them.
Or not printed, I mean, I I don't know that, I I guess I would like to know what. Ha, you know, are people actually like doing this, or are they just going on the website and getting our policies?
The students say they like, especially around dress code thing, they can look it up.
Yeah.
Then, once the teacher says something to them, or, yeah, we did ask, but.
I mean, if there's utility in having it printed, then.
I think it's worth asking again.
I used the printed copy when I had the kids that year, I used one of the ones that, well, one of the kids brought home and for reference.
Yeah. The printed is.
Old and it's easy to read paper when it is.
We don't print three hundred of them, do we?
We do, we need you.
Yeah, I don't need to print three hundred of them.
Do we have a, what is their cost?
I don't remember what it is.
How many students do we have?
Right, forty, something forty.
So we could print two fifty.
I mean, well, we printed a natural staff as well.
Staff.
Be three hundred.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, could we do electronic for the elementary school? The staff and just print a some for middle high school students with the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
I mean. Obviously, maybe not this year.
On our website, right? Yes, we're gonna select your staff now that it's on the website.
You're printing these like. Not printing twenty, that is gonna save you. Maybe because students are not gonna have access to electronics in the school. About the same.
There we go.
That was a good one.
That was a very good one.
Is it maybe they're not, they're not gonna have access to electronic devices in schools, so they may want printed copy.
That's right, but I was just gonna say that because with with students, if they wanna cite it, they they can't use their phone, they're gonna have to use.
Yeah, I mean, having each, having one in each classroom is.
Yeah.
Four hundred percent.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, free office, I don't know.
And just do copies of it.
Just, I don't know, I mean, we, I I I don't even know what like, what sort of money we're talking about in terms of like the cost of that. I don't really.
Right, if it's short money.
Trees as well, though, like resources.
Well, every time you're.
Look at the trees on his tail.
That's what I'm saying.
Down the forest.
All right, uh board member questionnaire on the audit.
Yes, I have them for you.
I I got copies. Yeah, a year ago.
Yeah.
Maybe I trust, maybe this is my dream.
I think it's pretty, it's pretty short and pretty uh uh. Straightforward, if we wanna do it now, it'll take maybe ten minutes.
Yeah, you might as well.
Okay, so um. It's the, the purpose of the questionnaire is to try to uncover any uh. Knowledge that anybody has of potential fraud or suspicious activity with regards to the finances, it's part of the normal accounting process. Um and the board answers the series of questions. Um, and basically, if anyone answers differently than, you know, said, everyone says, I don't, I don't know anything about fraud. You have, if you have, the answer is yes, you don't feel comfortable saying that in public like this, and we can have a discussion afterwards, but. You know, if the, you know, generally, it's, the answers have been down in the past, but that doesn't always mean that they will. Um, do you have any knowledge of fraud or suspected fraud affecting your entity?
No.
No. Is that no for everybody?
No.
No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators, or others alleging fraud?
No.
No.
Have there been any recent or unusual circumstances that might increase the risk of fraud?
No.
No.
Have you or any related parties or your? Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect? In any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July first, twenty twenty four, to which the school, district, or SAU, or any retirement? Savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party? That would be sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property?
Think so, don't have to apply anything, do they? Okay, good.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities?
No.
No work on this one. Transfer or receipt of income or assets?
No.
Other transactions? Uh, how does the school district, SAU monitor for or and respond to cybersecurity incidents? And are there uh incident response plans in place? If yes, please describe, so I think last time.
We just attached the policy.
Yeah, so did we, let's see.
It's a different set of questions.
Oh, it is a different set of questions. I mean, so the answer to that is. We could attach the policy for our cybersecurity policy, I think, and then um.
That was on our last.
What, where is it?
We spoke about the cyber policy.
The disaster recovery policy plan.
Yes.
I don't think it's on.
Maybe it was another thing you guys.
Did you just?
Yes, number ten. Yeah, but there was no.
That says disaster recovery plan in the event of a loss or interruption of IT function, I think it's a bit different.
Cybersecurity response and our, yeah, that's our response plan. Yeah, there's the, our disaster recovery plan is now the cybersecurity.
Okay, so we can uh just write, yes, see if that's.
Yes.
Next up is. Are there any documented disaster recovery and business continuity plans in place to address potential cyber security instances? That's the disaster recovery. Peace, um, again, I'll put yes and see policy. Does the board have any concerns about the integrity of the financial reporting process?
No.
No. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
Yes. If so, how often are the reports reviewed? Um. Usually a couple of times a year, isn't it, we get those like. Uh. The uh actually expended or or allocated versus, you know, what's in the general fund.
So two to three times per year?
Does that sound about right?
But you're reviewing that.
Oh, yeah.
On a regular basis.
Okay, so what we, so, but this is review of comparative reports, comparative reports. We do get those, yeah, we do get those sort of um. You know, she'll see, you'll see where she says like, this is what we've allocated for this budget. You know, she'll see, you'll see where she says like, this is what we've allocated for this budget item, or, you know, a budget category, and then this is how much we've spent on that so far. We do get those reports, um, last year, the, the answer to that question was weekly manifest, yes, weekly manifests and quarterly reports. I think that's probably a fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we all turning this in?
I'm just. Sign.
Okay.
Yeah, I just type it up and Jake doesn't sign, but.
Yeah. Sorry, right. You, oh, you know, you're saying like I'm uh, my handwriting, it's. Entertaining for. Um, how is the tone at the top communicated to employees? That is uh, not one. I'm not sure how to answer that, what do we mean by the tone at the top? Is that like your administrative role communicated to?
Expectation, ethics, values, and behavior, we have a safety handbook. Uh, those little things. Think that.
I, I'm not entirely sure what they mean by the top, but I think if we're talking about board policies, that's through, you know, through.
Your board policies posted on the website, we have a.
They were putting employee, employee handbook and board policy.
And I do, anytime you update policies, I send them to all the employees. Okay, so we can, we can put that too, all policies are sent out. Immediately after adopted. Or revised.
And then I, I think we should include that there is periodic ethics and, and ethics, periodic ethics trainings and the board level end at the staff.
Yeah.
Um, have any fraud risk assessments been completed?
Like yearly audit we go through.
Right. Uh, if yes, please provide a copy and explain the results, I mean, these folks did the audit.
Yeah, yearly audit, yeah. You should, you should have a thought.
You got that. Um, how are fraud risks communicated to employees?
Through board review of policies.
Yeah, I think, I think probably what they're talking about like. You know, is, it would be more like. Is our employee handbook.
That, and also there's a um. Do we call it the may request, budget request procedure? And sign offs by administrators on all purchases.
Um, and then I think also we could include. Um. I, I mean, I guess if this, if this is so. Accurate, is that if there's any sort of cybersecurity type.
Right.
That, that's communicated through the IT department. So for each board member, please provide years of service and a brief description of their backgrounds.
I can just copy and increase it by a year.
Very good.
Yeah. If you see anything that you want changed, just let me know, but other than that, I'll just.
Sydney. Right. Did you write that down? You call this, so I didn't.
I got it.
Thank you. I should have known, I don't know why I thought of it, I don't know.
Um, I wrote it down, dude, I don't feel bad.
You can, yeah, that's, that one's for you. Um.
I'll let you know when that's ready for you.
Okay, no, yeah, so do we have, is there like a time limit on that, or is that?
No, they're not coming until October, so.
Okay, at least so at the thirteenth, if, if not before. Um, we have, the last thing is the um, foreign exchange student, so. Couple of weeks ago, Mary reached out to me, uh, there'd been an application for a foreign exchange student from Korea through the Rotary, I believe.
Yes.
Um, Tammy is hosting.
Yes.
Says, exchange student, um, that our policy requires formal board approval, um, you know, based on my review of the stuff that I got sent. Um, I uh, told Mary that she can start the process of, of that. Um, approving the application and then we'll, we'll bring it to the board for formal approval, because it was kind of a time sensitive issue. Um, but there wasn't anything that jumped out at me in, in reviewing the application.
Uh, does he F one or J one?
J one, J one.
Uh, but that is up for, that needs action for approval tonight.
I'm gonna abstain from this vote, because I'm lost again, so.
Fair enough. Then you wanna make that, uh, make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the app, application of John Yun, John Hun Yun. Uh, as an exchange student for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
As presented, can I say that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, Jasmine, is there a second?
I'll say, I'll say yes.
Thank you, Joe, any further discussion on that?
The, the tuition, the.
Rotary covers that.
That's what I thought of.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was my question.
Uh. There's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, uh, and I've closed. Extentions and passes with Tammy saying.
I think we need to bring this policy back through, because it's some, it says May and sometimes it says shall, so it's kind of contradictory, so.
I'll bring that, okay.
Yeah.
That's the one on front of change students.
Yeah, it says board shall, then it said the board may.
What? Is um, in the. Here. This is good, that was in the.
Yeah, I'm on the road.
So there's, I think that there's.
Their top line.
Yeah, but I, there's, they're talking about like sort of different.
Stuff that.
I love. Right, it's a big one, I think.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's such a great.
It has those kids in the house.
One that you want to accept them. We just.
So location.
Yeah.
Then.
Right, it gets backwards.
Okay, so we can.
For sure.
Keep that up for.
Yeah.
The policy committee.
We have a backwards switch.
Um, then uh, we don't have anything under new or continuing business. Um. We don't have any students, staff, or community, do we? Do we have any reason to go to non-public? Can I say something in the community forum?
You may.
Good. Um, last week, I was, uh, I was invited to speak down at uh, St. Paul's, Donald Copper. At the advanced studies program and three limited students out of a hundred and seventy seven. New Hampshire students were there, represented by sixty, sixty schools, it was great to see three limited students there, uh, two of them sitting front row. Listen, we'll talk for around a half hour, uh, but it was, it was just great to, it was really like ambitious group of kids. And it was great to see some familiar faces there and. Kudos to those three who are representative with them.
Very cool.
Yeah, that's great. Morgan, do a journey.
Second.
All those there.
Aye.
Aye. And that is the end. Thank you, everybody.
It makes up a Jasmine.